Okay, we're going ahead and bringing the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We appreciate you coming. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Gutierrez.
I am here.
Vice President McGlory.
Present.
Trustee Mayor.
Here.
Trustee Rosenberg.
Here.
President Clark.
Here.
Mr. Logan.
Here.
Missing class, but excuse. And you just didn't do that, did you? You were like sad.
Oh, I did.
And I am here.
Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Logan, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance since you're...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Okay, public comment. So I have public comment cards for this section as well as for the next section when we discuss the applicants. But it looks like the ones that signed up for this one are also regarding the candidate. Do you want to go now if you signed up for this one, or do you want to wait until the item? I'll call you and you can decide, okay? Kimberly Thomas.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'll go now. That's okay.
Absolutely. It's up to you.
All right. I wrote my comments, and I have to put my cheaters on because the font's way too small. All right, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak about my friend Angie Taylor. I moved to Reno about a year and a half ago after my husband was accepted a position coaching at the University of Nevada Reno. He's coaching the cornerbacks, and so that brought our family to the city. We live in the McQueen School District, and my son is currently a senior at McQueen High School. Angie is my neighbor, and I consider her a friend and a well-respected person in the city of Reno. I've seen the impact of Angie in various environments, including my neighborhood community, the university community, and in efforts where she's been involved in charitable organizations around the city. Angie does not have children in the public schools, but her compassion and support of the children in our district is consistent and welcomed. We can count on Angie to attend our ballgames with us, to celebrate with us when our kids have even what we consider very small successes and meet very small goals. Angie is always very excited about it and enthusiastic and willing to celebrate them. She gives sound advice and direction to the kids, which my kid included, and on classroom advice and on things that involve them socially. I've asked her to buy fundraising cards, and I know she didn't need them, but because my son needed to sell two more to keep from running sprints or whatever, Angie has always done that. And so I've seen her do it with all the kids at church, and I know she has enough of those little Lancer Cards, but she keeps spending $20 to help us out. I work in the Office of Student Conduct at the University of Nevada, and Angie's reputation on campus is stellar. She's often described as a woman of integrity who works hard at whatever the task. All who know her say she's reliable, she's trustworthy, she's balanced and bright. Angie is an excellent listener and able to get along with people from all different backgrounds and age groups. She has the ability to be flexible while standing on the governing principles. I admire her for keeping an even temper and her excitement when she sees others succeed, especially students. I have seen young adults rush to her with excitement to tell her about accomplishments because they consider her a mentor or because they value her opinion. I believe in the African proverb that it takes a village to raise a child. Angie gets that concept and has been an excellent villager to the youth in our school district and in the UNR community. I believe our students in this district, District E, will benefit greatly by a villager like Angie, who is encouraging, reliable, approachable, friendly, well-educated, and willing to sacrifice her time and her resources to support them. As a parent, providing for the welfare of children in my community is of the utmost importance to me. It is a priority. I believe that the children of District E and Washoe County will benefit from the gifts and talents of Angie Taylor, and I ask that you select her to fill the vacancy on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Weber. Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to thank the board, can you hear me, for your service first. I am also here in support of Dr. Angie Taylor. I'm not here because she's in a minority, nor am I here because she's a woman. I'm here because I feel that she is the best candidate for the job. I know the Washoe County School District as a parent. My husband Franz and I have three college-age children who are all products of the Reno public schools. We volunteered regularly, and we got to see the concerns of both the parents and the teachers. The Washoe County School District is at a crossroads, and I believe Dr. Taylor is the best candidate for the position. Her personal story as the daughter of a single mom on welfare gives her a unique perspective to the challenges faced by many of our students. She is a shining example of the power of education to transform lives. Angie has over 20 years of experience in education and has maintained a regular presence, serving the community and attending functions. She's very positive, task-oriented, and she's well-liked in the community. She knows how to navigate difficult situations with tact and grace. She's enthusiastic, focused, and pragmatic, all qualities that will serve the board well. In closing, I just want to reiterate that I believe Dr. Taylor will be an asset to the board, and I know she will work tirelessly to move forward in a positive and professional manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Glenn Taylor, Sr. Welcome.
Welcome. As you can tell, I really don't need the mic, but nevertheless, nevertheless, I'm glad to be here before the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees and interim superintendent Tracy Davis. And I want you to know that I'm here in support, of course, of Dr. Angie Taylor. And I just want to say, I wish I had both of these individuals in my church on Sunday morning, because then I'd just stand up and say ditto, ditto, and my congregation would be very happy, all right? But nevertheless, out of all that they've said, I personally have an interest in Angie Taylor, not because we share the same last name and know we're not related. Spiritually, we are; naturally, we're not; biologically, we're not. But I'd like to say that I have watched Angie for all the years technically that she's been in Reno, from playing basketball at Hug High School to even being a coach up at University of Nevada Reno as well as an assistant vice president in student affairs, I think it was, up at the university. Nevertheless, she's been my administrative assistant at my church for, oh my God, ever since she came. I think she tried to run stuff, all right? But nevertheless, she's been my assistant, and I love her very much. And the impact that she's made on our community through the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society, the NWCP, all the organizations that she's supported, included many of the local churches, I just think she'd be a wonderful, a wonderful addition to the Board of Trustees. And I was hoping my friend Dave Iasi was here, because, you know, I believe in giving individuals flowers while they yet live. And I would say that Angie Taylor would be a wonderful, not replacement, but someone to allow the legacy of David Iasi to go on with the impact that he's already made on our community. And believe it or not, I'm looking at the clock, and I haven't used up all my time, so I'll let somebody else use that. And thank you for your time and information.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Trustees, Ms. Clark. Chuck Johnson, resident of Reno, two grandkids in the district. This past November 4, in the only contested race of a school board trustee that was involved in the Pedro Martinez debacle, the public spoke loud and clear. A relatively unknown political newcomer defeated the sitting board of trustees president. By a nearly two-to-one margin, the public has expressed its displeasure with not only the board president, but also its lack of confidence in other trustees who created this highly controversial situation. If you are listening, the message is loud and clear. It will not be forgotten in the future, as I'm sure some of you are hoping for. Today, you are here to filter down the applications to fill the open seat of Mr. Iasi. Excuse me. The finalists are to be interviewed and a replacement selected in a meeting scheduled for November 18. The newly-elected trustees will not be seated until January. In view of the strong message sent to the board in November 4, is it fair to the public, the school district, and the new trustees to have this board select a new member that they will be working with in the future, yet not have a say on who that person is? Delaying this decision until the new trustees are sworn in is the right thing to do for the district and a step in the right direction to help restore confidence in this board of trustees. This board has the power to reschedule the decision dates. I have not been able to find any statute that mandates a specific timeline for choosing a replacement. District E will not go unrepresented. There is an at-large trustee that also represents that area. Do the right thing and reschedule the timeline for this selection. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for that first item. Is there anybody that signed up for 2.01 that would rather speak now? Welcome, come on up. And did you put a card in, or...
I did, yes.
And what's your name, sir?
My name is Joe Crowley.
Thank you very much.
You should have a card. I gave it to somebody who was authoritative.
Got it. Thank you.
What?
I burned it.
Nothing new about your behavior, Howard.
I should know better.
Well, I'm here also to offer some thoughts about Angie Taylor, whom I've known for many, many years, since she was a student at Hug High, where at the same time Angie was there, our two oldest children were students at Hug High. One of them, by the way, a teacher, as some of you know, in the Washoe County School District. Angie, I'm sure you're aware of much of her sterling record in several fields of endeavor, but leadership for one thing was showed by Angie when she was at Hug. She was student body president. She was a star basketball player. That contribution recognized by the NIAA by bringing Angie into the Hall of Fame. She went on to the University of the Hillways and played basketball there and starred in other ways as well and did so well, though this she would not number probably among her greatest triumphs. She was offered a part-time job at the university in sports information, if I recall correctly. We paid her handsomely. I think Angie could straighten me out here, but the figure I recall is $5,000 for the year that she served. But it was a part-time position, and she demonstrated her capability in that position, and so was offered a full-time job, and she took it, and she worked her way up to senior associate athletic director, which is not quite as high as she could go. I would have been happy to appoint her athletic director had she stayed a while, but she didn't. She went across campus, worked for the Alumni Association in an administrative position, then was associate vice president of Student Services, but ever seeking to broaden her experience, plural experiences. She went to the private sector, started with a colleague, who I believe is in the room this morning as well, a company of their own, which worked on leadership development and teamwork and diversity and helped, still helping, companies, not just in this area, not just in the state, but around the country in those extremely important and consequential responsibilities. She's a winner, however you measure winners. Angie can do it. She knows politics quite well, and she knows government quite well. She certainly understood the institution. She is the person who really, more than anybody else at the university, made women's sports programs work and work well, formed an organization PACPAWS that helped make that happen, that went down to the legislature and raised $1 million, having talked to legislators ahead of time, which allowed us to add three women's sports. Angie was a figure in other sports as well. She was a beloved person at the university, has been in that position ever since. Anybody who knows Angie loves her, so I hope that you will see fit to give her good recognition and advance her to the position for which she has applied. I only want one minute and 20 seconds overtime, which is, Howard would testify, a record for me.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this point?
Yes.
Welcome.
Nathan Dupree. I am a local community pastor and also the director of the 360 Blueprint program. I'm here today to offer support of Angie Taylor. I was a newcomer to this community, and I met Angie at a program that she was running up at the university. And I was like, who's this woman that is so passionate about these kids? Very passionate. And if you know Angie, Angie would get in your face, and she would get in your face to do the right thing. And her passion is just incredible, just incredible, and she's an incredible asset to this community, the way she works with kids and the youth, and her interest is in the kids and them getting on a good track and them being on the right course to succeed in life. And that's where her passion and her interest is, and you see that just come forth from her. Angie speaks at many different events in our community, speaking to our young people. This one specific event she does is called Black Girls Rock, and she speaks to these young girls, and she speaks to them about their lives, about their character, and about their potential, and about the opportunities that's there for them. And it's incredible to see the results and the way those young people walk away from that event. And so we look for a lot of qualities in people. We look for a lot of access in people. And her interest is the kids. And when you find people who their interest is about the kids, it's about what's best for them and what's going to take them to the next level of their life, or what's going to cause them to succeed, you're finding someone that you want on your board, and you're finding someone that you want on your team. And when those main qualities come out, it's about the kids, it's not about me, it's not about, you know, any other agenda, but it's about the kids. I think you're going to get the best results that you can get from a person when that is their highest interest, and that's my support for Angie Taylor today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. I'm not sure how long the baby will behave outside, and all he was is talking. He doesn't cry unless he wants to eat. My name's Carol Hines. I taught in the Washoe County School District. I was a 2003 Teacher of the Year, one of the top 17 teachers named by USA Today in 2002. I've worked with numerous superintendents, board members, and I know how a board works. I understand the value of a superintendent that has strength. And I'm here to promote my son, who is not in town, Brady Hines. He is currently back in North Carolina training the men going through the final phase of Special Forces training. It's called Robin Sage. It's the third phase, and if they don't, if they make it, they get the beret. If they don't, they're in the don't. And he's back there right now because that's what he does, and he's good at it. You've read what he has done in the past. May I just say, he doesn't normally put himself out in front this way. I didn't know until I read it that he'd received two Bronze Stars. And he is the most tight-lipped child I had. I had another one, who it was too much information. Please stop talking. Brady doesn't do that, which is why he's really good at what he does. He's a product of the Washoe County School District, starting here in middle school at Clayton, going on to McQueen. He attended college, wasn't quite his thing, hung around with a group of kids that were going nowhere and still are and have gone nowhere, and decided he wanted to do what his grandpa and his dad had done, and he joined the Army. He wanted to be a paratrooper because his dad was in the first group of paratroopers during World War II. His dad was a Green Beret Benick, and he felt that he should also do that, and he did. He has met with the presidents of the countries all over the world, negotiated with them, made deals with them, down to a tribal chief sitting in a mud hut in Afghanistan. Very scary, always very scary. When he was there, he's been deployed in every hellhole except Iraq, go figure. But he knows how to negotiate. He knows how to deal. He knows how to work with people who have nothing to those who have an abundance, and he knows how to come to a resolution that can work with them, including the building of clinics to provide medical care, schools. And they realized, in Afghanistan particularly, the girls have no power, which is not a surprise to us. And they started giving the candy to the girls to disperse. It all says USA and has an American flag on it. You can't buy it. It's just given away there. And by giving the girls the power, they believe eventually what happened in Ireland could happen there, that the women will say enough is enough. It will take a long time because they have no power. He came to my classroom when he was home on leave. He worked with the 12-year-olds, and I still miss them. That's the only part I miss, well, maybe read, their work. He's involved with safety, security. He understands terrorists. Before 9/11, he can talk to you and told me of things to do in my classroom if there were shootings. He's ethical. He's reasonable. He can negotiate. He can set priorities. He knows how to budget. He knows that, and I know, that his impacts have been felt around the world, and he has made a difference, and he will make a difference for us. His passion and dedication went with him everywhere he traveled, and it will travel with him to this boardroom to make decisions that will secure the safety, improve, and work towards enhancing the education of our students, and he will do it with a respect for everyone because that's the kind of man he is. And I'm really honored that he, and I was proud to read what he had done because, like I said, he's very tight-lipped, and I would encourage you to look very closely at what he can bring to this group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and that cute little boy out there, that's his little son, Braun. He's nine months, and his wife, Therese, and they're a joy as well. You would enjoy them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak at this point? Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Sandra Rentes. I'm a business counsel for Nevada Small Business Development Center, and I'm also here to support Dr. Angie Taylor. I moved to Reno in 2002 to pursue my master's degree, and I was a graduate student from Angie Taylor. Angie Taylor, really, she started new initiative for the department, did a lot of things that people never did before. She was willing to take risks, try something new, and always get the necessary funds to do it. One of the programs that she started was Start Thinking About College. It's a partnership with the school district. We bring, we used to bring 1,007 graders students from different backgrounds, Native American, African-American, Hispanics, Tongan-Somones, so they could have an experience of what college it is. Also, another program that she created was Story Success Dinner, with getting a diverse group of people, to community leaders, to open their homes, to talk to the students. There were judges, cardiologists, a great group of dinner, success dinners. Another event, another program that she created was Accent, which is a mentor program in collaboration with Hug High School. Definitely, I was, when I was working for Angie, I was, I used to, home was my office. I used to be there for eight to 12 hours. I know it's different when you work with someone, but always Angie was someone with integrity, excellent values, a passion for people, especially students. She's a very detailed person, always striving for excellence. She's really an example in this community. I worked for her for four years. It's been a while. In 2014, we still get in contact. Last year, I called her since there was an African-American student struggling at the university, and she was willing to sit down and talk to her. Definitely, she was one of my great mentors. I learned so much from her, and definitely, I am a better person today since I know Angie Taylor. Thank you.
My name's Rosalie Martinez. I'm a faculty at the University of Nevada Reno, and today I'm here on behalf of Dr. Angie Taylor and in support of her taking this position. I have worked with, at the Center for Student Cultural Diversity for over 10 years, and the center provides programs and services for all students in order for them to be successful in their academics and social. Dr. Taylor has been an advocate and a supporter of the Center for Student Cultural Diversity, not only as our associate vice president, but as well afterwards, as she has continued her ally, her support with the Center for Student Cultural Diversity and the University of Nevada Reno. She's ensuring that our future generations have equitable access to education. She has implemented the Start Thinking About College, just as you have heard previously, and it brings seventh graders that are potentially at risk of not continuing, and these are seventh graders that have the potential to go on to college, but might have those risks that might not be able, that they might not be able to go to college. And the Ascent Program as well. Dr. Taylor ensured that these programs continue to take place either through the center or through other means. The center, she has been a role model, not only to her colleagues, students, and also to her community, and the center has since modeled youth summits after the Start Thinking About College for high school students to ensure that they are also getting the opportunity to come on to the campus and ensure that she's, they're getting the information they need. I continuously receive emails and phone calls from Dr. Taylor in order to refer any student to the University of Nevada Reno to ensure that they get all the resources to retain them and graduate them. Dr. Taylor is highly qualified for this position and has her personal and professional experiences that she's lived herself and knows what it takes to make sure that we have an educated workforce and better our community. Dr. Taylor is passionate, dedicated, and energetic in making people and organizations a lot better. And she has also been a mentor to myself, whether she knows it or not, but she has taught us, me and other people, a lot.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have two cards left for, at the agenda item. Last chance. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda item, which is 2.01. Review and discussion of the applications submitted for the replacement for trustee Dave Iasi, board of trustees, District E, and selection of candidates to be interviewed at the regular meeting of the board of trustees on November 18, 2014. Mr. Drake, and is Ms. Huckabee here?
She will be, yes.
Or just...
She's here. She will be.
Right behind you. Welcome. Oh, there you are.
Good morning, trustees. Interim Superintendent Davis. Logan, how are you? Randy Drake, chief general counsel.
And I'm Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer.
And I'm Dawn Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thank you, we're here to start the discussion off on item 2.01. As a little bit of a background, on August 7th, 2014, trustee Azzie announced his resignation from District E. Subsequently, trustee Azzie identified that the resignation would be effective on November 4th, 2014. In preparation for that effective date, on October 14th, 2014, the trustees discussed the process to fill the vacancy and the options available to the trustees. The process would be conducted in accordance with NRS 386.240, which has requirements for the candidates, as well as requirements for the, the posting of the vacancy. The candidates must live in District E, and they must be a qualified elector. The publication requirements were met, the, the announcement was published for two consecutive weeks in the Reno Gazette-Journal. It was also posted in the Reno News and Review, the Sparks Tribune, and the three local Spanish publications. Also at that meeting, the, on October 14th, the board discussed previous process used to fill a vacancy, using two meetings. One meeting to review applications and, and one meeting to interview finalists and select replacement. The board directed that applications be submitted and, uh, starting October 17th and accepted through October 27th. The applications were to include a letter of interest, a CV and resume, CV or resume, and to answer five questions. And the five questions were as follows. Why are you interested in serving on the W C S D Board of Trustees? Number two, what experience, interests, training, or other skills do you feel you would bring to the W C S D Board of Trustees? Number three, what do you feel are the major challenges facing public education in Washoe County? Number four, what do you believe are W C S D's strengths and weaknesses? And how do you believe W C S D could be improved? Number five, what is the role of a W C S D trustee? Through October 27th, the deadline for the applications, you received seventeen, seventeen applications. On October 28th, those applications were delivered to each of the trustees, as well as posted on the district website at the same time. And then, the meeting after that, on October 28th, 2014, there was a further discussion about this process, and you discussed, again, holding those two meetings, and you scheduled the two meetings for November 13th, which is today, to review the applications, and November 18th to, and, and possibly select finalists, to then be interviewed on November 18th for the selection of the replacement. So that is where we stand. That is the summary of the process up to now, and I will open it up for discussion. And Ms. Huckabee is also here to answer any human resource-related questions that may arise.
Great. I was on the phone at the last meeting. It, what I remember is that we were all going to come prepared with our list of whatever, five or six finalists, or whatever that number was. And I'm assuming that's where we're at. And do we want to go around the room and list what our, if somebody can keep track to see where we're in tandem?
President Clark, I have, we have a, a list of the candidates that we could pass out to the trustees, if you want to indicate your finalist choices that way. We could then gather, just as a suggestion, we could then gather those sheets. They would be made a part of the public record. We could then indicate to you or represent to you what those sheets indicated or represented, and you could have a discussion from that point. That was a suggestion that, at this point, I have.
How do the trustees feel about that?
What, what do you mean by sheets?
It is a list of the seventeen applicants, and just a box next to each applicant where you could either rank or just check as a finalist. You could check all, none, it would be up to each individual trustee.
Okay, and so, once we go through that piece, what would be the next steps?
We would represent to you what your, what the sheets indicated as far as your choices and choices of finalists. And then, it would be up to the trustees to take that information and select finalists from that point, if the trustees so chose.
Okay, trustee McClory and trustee Gutierrez.
Yes, I believe that is what we had planned to do at this board meeting. Everyone who's done their homework and is ready to move forward with that. That sounds like a relatively simple way to do it.
Justty Gutierrez.
I just wanted to confirm with all of you if we're set with five finalists. Is that what we're looking at, as far as finalists? I know that, I have to just congratulate all of the applicants. I was very impressed, and thank you for submitting your application. I took a lot of time, and I'm sure all of us took a lot of time, looking at the applicants. And also, just for transparency, I just want to thank Dawn for providing us a sheet to kind of guide our, you know, as we looked at each applicant based on their CV, their resume, and the questions, and there were some attributes and so forth. So, thank you so much for, for doing that. So I guess five, five, because I know I have top eight, but.
I think we ought to decide the number and then put down, check off who your top five are, or six, or whatever.
And can I ask Dawn, usually, and I know I do this a lot, but just you as an expert, usually, if you want to get to five, it would be a little bit more like top eight, maybe, to get to five? What would your recommendation be? Because I know I have, just for the record, I have top eight.
That's a great question, trustee Gutierrez. And I guess my question back to the board first is, if you want to look at these in terms of check marks, where each one is equal, or if you want to look at it in terms of ranking? Because that would make the difference, to say eight check marks is one thing, or to be ranking the candidates is something different. So that would be the first decision point.
Well, we're looking to get to the interview process. So which works best for that? Trustee Rosenberg?
I think ranking.
I've done both. I, I would like to just check off the top eight and then go that way. That's just my.
Maybe the first round is, let's do the check off and see whether we're here and there, or whether we're here. And that might be ending up that five or six come right off as everybody's in agreement of.
I would suggest checking your choices off. And I would also suggest not necessarily limiting it to five. You could check off however many you deemed appropriate to be a finalist. And then we can present that information to you, and you can decide at that point. It's just a little more flexible that way, but that's up to, that's just a thought.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Hand out the list.
Can we take a recess while we check?
Yeah, absolutely. And it will take you time to tabulate, so. You mean you want to move away from the board table to do, do your checklist?
Yeah, and take a little recess, I can take a minute.
No, just do it here. No, I think we need to do that in public here at the board. Do your checklist, and then while they're tabulating, if you want to go to the bathroom or something, or go get a soda, you're more than welcome to.
And then, once those are completed, we'll gather those, and I would suggest we take a brief recess, and then we'll come back with some information.
Do you want her name on this?
Yeah.
You should put her name on it.
You don't have to have your names on that. You'll, at the end, there'll be a, you'll have to take action at the end and, and, and take a vote. That's when it.
It's when you take your vote that you're.
Yeah.
After the interviews, that you're indicating. Are you from Price Waterhouse?
I don't know if I'm, I'm not quite ready yet.
And, and why don't you remain seated there as you tabulate, so that transparency.
I'm feeling pressured. I needed a minute.
I probably, um, have a couple comments. We do have two additional public comments. And, um, why don't we have you come up and speak? If that changes any of the trustees listening, then please indicate so and grab back another sheet to do it before we tabulate it. And I apologize, I should have done this right from the beginning. Okay, um, Sharice Bailey, am I pronouncing your first name right? Welcome.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sharice Bailey, and Angie Taylor is my mentor. She, I've known her for about five years now, ever since I started going to Greater Light Christian Center. And she just, I just want to say, she has so much passion for children. She's always, she's, all her, whatever she does is all about children, basically. And, I don't know, we did this thing at our church. We held, uh, for eight students. We did a bunch of fundraisers to go to the HBCU tour. It's a historically black college tour. And Angie helped us. We wouldn't have been able to go if it wasn't for her. In the two years, she helped us raise about fifteen thousand dollars for all of us to go and extra spending money, because our parents didn't have a lot of money for us to go. So, just in the five years I've known her, she, she's always helped me out as a student. She's always helped my peers out. And I just think that she would be a great asset to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Berry? Welcome.
Good morning, Steele, okay. Hi, so many of you I see here that I know, and so I just, first of all, let me say this. Thank you for what you have done. It's not easy sitting in these seats, and to do public service, it's just, it's hard work sometimes. And so, but I do applaud that because it's noble work, and it's needed. And you got to have people who are willing to be committed to do that. So, through everything, thank you for that. So sorry to see the ones who are leaving. I just think that, you know, when you lose experience, that means a big deal. So, but I'll go to my talk real quick. I know you have a great candidate, that's why you're sitting there trying to figure it out, and you don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, and there's a lot of qualified people there. So I get that part right there. I wish you, I know you wish you could have seventeen more spots. Well, maybe not, so.
Stop.
But, maybe not. Well, that wasn't in my remarks, by the way. But I am here to support Angie Taylor. And here's the biggest thing, I think, that you have to look at when you're looking for a candidate. Who will add value to what you need to fill the gaps, to take this board forward? And so, the biggest thing that you have heard from so many people here from the community is leadership. And we have heard many times, everything rises and falls on leadership. And so, that's so important. But I also have discovered a long time ago is that decisions determine destiny. And she's a person who has the foundations to make great decisions. Also, she's not just a leader in the community. I believe her PhD is in educational leadership, but she's done it in business, she's done it in her faith community, she's done it in education, she's done it in nonprofits. So she brings a flexibility and a variety and a diversity of experience to the table. And she has a proven track record of results, which I think is what you have to pay attention to when you're making hard decisions. Also, she's a role model, you've heard so many people talk about that. I think it means something to have somebody who has lived in this community, graduated from the high school here, graduated from the university here, walk the streets and gets that part. It, it says so much about what you're tasked to do on a daily basis. How do we get these kids to the next level, next level of their lives? Get them to graduate and be productive adults. A couple words I think about, I think about when you're sitting at this seat, that you must have in terms of skill sets and competencies. You must have a visionary, you must have someone who's inclusive, you must have somebody who is accountable, you must have courage to make tough decisions, you must be clear and collaborative, you must be loyal, you must be goal-oriented, you must be results-driven, you must be a problem solver, you must care about the students, and you must be focused on what's best for this community. I, you know, I'm in the military, and one of the things we have is core values. One of the most important core values that we talk about is service above self. And to sit in these seats, you have to do service above selves. And the person that I'm asking you to endorse and to really think closely about is somebody who has a long record of doing service above self. Also, I kind of thought about, I'll call it the central triangle for success in order to be sitting here. You have to understand and have a love and a passion for education. We, we don't pay our teachers and educators enough money. If, if, when I become president, we're going to give all of them a big, huge raise, okay? And so, I'm going to tell you that right now, and, but you have to have a passion for this. I know that nobody here did this for the money, so you must have a passion for education. You also have, must have a love for this community. Our community is unique, it's different. We all know that. We're a case study, all the time. And in a good way, though, in a good way. But when you start going around and knocking on doors and asking people, who has a love for the community? You're going to find Angie Taylor. You don't have to look in her resume or her background to see how much she's volunteered to do this. And the last thing is leadership. This is my favorite definition of leadership, and I'm just going to say it because this is what guides me. But leadership is the capacity to influence others through inspiration, motivated by passion, generated by vision, produced by a conviction, and ignited by a purpose. That's Angie Taylor. And that's what you need sitting at this table. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service, thank you. If y'all need to come back and give us advice, we appreciate that. But, you know, so many times, you don't get a chance to hear the thank yous because it's a hard job. But I just want to recommend somebody who will take it to the next level and will truly raise the bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Oh, sorry, I have one more card. Carlos, is it Ladon?
Ladon.
Ladon, welcome.
I wasn't going to speak today, I was going to kind of let the die be cast, but I wanted to give a couple considerations. President Clark, Vice President McClory, thanks for giving me the time to speak today. As I said, my name is Carlos Ladon. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to ask for your consideration. I'd like you guys to focus on the fact that this is a representative board. It's representative of the districts that you come from. And look to the community that is being represented in District E. Look to the teachers, the parents, the students, the principals, the faculty that are in District E for their support, their feedback, and who they'd like to have sitting at this board representing them. I also urge you to look at the candidates and say, who is already putting in the work? Who do you recognize that has been at this board meeting before this vacancy was open? Who do you recognize that has come to these meetings and has disagreed with you, but has still been professional? Who's been at the student body meetings? Who's been at the school district meetings? Who's been at the principal's office trying to figure out how to make these schools better? Ask those questions. Ask the question on how many of these candidates were here before this opening was available? Who's invested in the District E and the school board as a whole? Not just who's looking out for Somerset, who's looking out for the entire Washoe County School? Ask who's passionate about all the education in Northern Nevada. Not just K through 12, but higher ed, pre-K, special ed, language learners, online learning, Khan Academy, STEM, everything that encompasses the education that we need for Nevada. I work in the construction industry, and I just read an incredible article about the educating the workforce and how we don't have the workforce. Well, let's start focusing on higher-level learning. Let's start working on having these students be prepared for college. Let's start working on literacy, let's start working on graduations. Let's start working on the Latino community to be able to succeed. I'm a first-generation college student. My father came over here when he was thirteen years old from Cuba. I had no college education in my family, I was the first one to get there. I succeeded because of teachers in my background, Eric Johnson and David Bellamy in my high school, and Howard Rosenbergs in our. Eric Johnson and David Bellamy in my high school, and Howard Rosenberg's in art, the, the people that stood behind me, the Joe Crowleys that sat and listened to me argue about soccer fields for the women's soccer team when I was student body president at Nevada.
True.
I would love to be part of this board. I would love to work with this group. I see that you're passionate about it. You guys have taken a lot of heat, and you just, we need to look forward. And I would urge you to do that. Look to all the candidates. There is a great deal of them that have a great deal to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Welcome, come on up. And you can fill out a card afterwards. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Darcy Smith, and I didn't know that I was allowed to do this because I'm one of the candidates. So I have nothing prepared. At a suggestion of two people around me, they said that you like to put a name with the face. I would really like to be a part of the board. This, the political aspect is something that I know nothing of. I have no connections. But I've been a school teacher for sixteen years with Washoe County School District. I've taken my whole life to get my doctorate. I have a perspective of teaching and the, the children who are struggling. That's been my specialty throughout my entire career. I just kind of fell into it. And looking at the qualifications of the people on the board, I see that you have business, that you have leadership, that you have university, that you have even some high school. I don't see that you have the elementary education. And this is something that I have been with my entire life. I can bring you other people to talk to, about me if you would like at a, for, at another date, but I think I could add a reasonable comment to the decisions that you are making. I think that the best things for the district are not just what I think is right. I think it's a conglomeration of what, everything is, is, is being added. But I, I do believe that I would have something that should be considered. I've been in the classroom a long time, and I see the results of what's happening with Common Core. So thank you very, very much. And also, like everyone else has said, thank you all very much for your service. This is, in many cases, a very thankless position, and I understand that, and that's one of the reasons that I would like it, because I just think I could do some good. So thank you very, very much. And is this the card?
Yes.
I will sign it and send it right to you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Welcome, come on up.
Thanks to the chair and to the board. I'm Bishop Dupree, reflective of the churches of God in Christ in the Northern Nevada area. I would think of the meeting was at eleven thirty. Why I got in so late? I'm sorry. Just got in from St. Louis. But I'm here, uh, representing, or at least reflecting, Angie Taylor, Dr. Angie Taylor. I watched her grow up in this community. I have five children that grew up in this area, all went to school and graduated somewhere elsewhere, to colleges, et cetera. But Dr. Angie Taylor has played a role in most of their lives, if not all of their lives. She has been a role model, uh, ever since I've known her. She's an educator. She's, uh, you know, diverse in all kinds of things in the community. And certainly, we, uh, think that she would bring, uh, a new mindset, new, uh, influence to the board. And so, in your consideration, I certainly hope and pray that you would consider, uh, Dr. Angie Taylor. And I did a lot of the thing that, uh, General Andre Berry said concerning, uh, Dr. Angie Taylor. I think she'd be a wise, a good candidate, and certainly think she would be, uh, an asset to the board and this community as well. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think they should rip up the tallies and tally again.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. Somebody wanted to redo their thing, we'd rip up the entire and redo it again. I want to make sure before we get to that point that anybody else that would like an opportunity to be cast, so. Seeing none. Would the board like to recast their ballot after hearing this?
Aye.
Okay, so, why don't you rip those up right now in front of us?
I have more copies.
Well, did you, did you sign it?
No.
Just revote them.
We have to revoke.
Do it again!
Revote these.
So let me ask one other question before you tabulate then. Is there any desire or need to have someone not associated with the school district to be a third party to counting the ballots?
To watch the process?
Or to watch the process, one or the other? I just throw that out to the trustees, is there-
We could have it.
Still associated with the school district.
How about the cameraman back there, that handsome looking guy?
Somebody who is not, has no ties to a candidate. Would you like to do that? Trustees, I'm asking you.
Yes, sure.
Okay. So, okay, cameraman number one, do you have any ties to any candidate?
I'm not gonna stay for the whole thing, I'm sorry.
Well, just to watch the ballot.
You're just watching the tally of the votes. Okay, step forward then, and they're gonna tally right now.
Take a recess?
Yes, as long as, you need to stay here in the public.
We're gonna stay right here.
The board or the, uh, if they want to get up and stretch, but we're gonna be here for, be about five minutes, I would think.
See that? He's setting up the camera to get himself.
We're gonna go ahead and get started, if everybody would like to take their seats.
Here she is.
Oh, Barbara. She came in the other door.
Came in, sorry.
Okay.
Retardy.
Sorry, Professor.
We're, I'm gonna gavel again so Steve knows we're starting. Okay, we're, go ahead, and we're back in session, and Mr. Drake, um, do you have, what results do you have?
Ms. Huckabee and I, um, did one count, and then we did a second count to verify the first count, and they both came out the same. We have two candidates with six votes, one candidate with five votes, two candidates with four votes, two candidates with three votes, one candidate with two votes, and four candidates with one vote.
So that's twelve in different candidates.
Yes. Um, if, if you are, um, if you limited it to a top five, there are two candidates with six, one candidate with five votes, one candidate with five votes, and two candidates with four votes. Then there are two candidates with three, and one candidate with two, and then four ones. So would you like me to identify?
No, I don't, don't, uh, don't identify yet. I think we ought to have a discussion of where we want to make the breakoff, if at all. I think when you're talking about a majority, maybe we do do the top five.
Because you would have to have at least four, and four for one.
What would be the downside in learning who the names are?
Well, let's, let's-
Because then I, well, I don't know.
No, I'm just, I don't have the-
I don't know.
A candidate doesn't have to have four votes to move on. I just, I want to be clear about that. Your motion, your motion and action controls the next, controls, uh, the, the interviews. So it's not a, a matter of number right now, it's just a part of discussion of how many move forward right now.
Well, it is, because if you move down to three, then why not move down to two, and then why not move down to one? So I think that we either make a cutoff point or we don't, so.
I think we draw a line, and I think, uh, top five is a good line. Is, do you need a motion?
No, I think we should, uh, identify, um, well-
No, I-
No, you can take that action right now.
I don't, I don't think they ought to identify the people yet, because I, this decision, I don't think should be made on the people.
Right. You can make a decision right now of how many you're going to interview, and then we can move forward from there.
I think we, we came in talking about five, so we do have our five. We were successful.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Okay, so let's do, uh, is everybody in agreement with that?
Let's have a motion.
Do we need a motion?
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we, we have five candidates.
Second.
Further discussion.
I do think we need to disclose all of their names at the end. Are we at the end, even with the one vote?
These records are public, so they will be identified. And-
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we have five people that are gonna move on to the interview on the eighteenth.
Do we do, need a drumroll?
Go ahead, be a general. And so, would you like to list the five, please, right now?
I'm gonna list the five in alphabetical order. The first finalist will be Carlos Ladon, or Ladon, I apologize if I mispronounced that. The second finalist will be Diane Nicolet. The third finalist will be Darcy Smith. The fourth finalist will be Jean Stose. I again apologize if I mispronounced that. And the fifth finalist will be Angela Taylor.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to those five moving on to the interview process. Of course, we thank everybody who, um, put in applications. We appreciate that you stepped forth, and as has been indicated by many of the comments today, to, um, choose to come forth and to put your name for public service and to take on the role and responsibility is no small, um, measure. It's, it's an important seat. The school district is important in our community, so we appreciate everybody that took the time to fill out applications and to send them in and to really think about, um, in essence, volunteering their time to serve on this board of trustees. So, thank you to everyone. Okay, next, we need to discuss our process for Tuesday. Trustee Gutierrez.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna ask as far as the process. So, the next process is an interview and, I guess, questions. And the comment was, are the questions, you know, we're gonna provide the questions prior to the interview, and how do we manage that in an open forum, in an open meeting? And, or do we not give them the questions prior to that meeting? And how many questions? And how many minutes per, per?
Trustee Ruggerio, then trustee mayor.
I had asked Legal to contact Clark County, uh, because they've done this process several times, and I was curious what their process-
They've always done a magnificent job.
No, are you sarcastic?
No, I'm never sarcastic.
Okay, well, I just wasn't curious about their interview process.
Yes. Um, I can go over that real quickly. There were, uh, the last time Clark County did this, there were four finalists. The, the candidates were giving, were, each candidate was given, uh, three minutes to introduce themselves at the podium and speak. And then, the, the, in, the four finalists were asked to voluntarily leave the room and go in a separate conference room to allow the individual interviews to proceed. After the three-minute introduction, candidates were brought back into the boardroom and provided questions that the trustees would ask. The candidates were given a few minutes to review the questions, and then the questions were asked individually by the trustees. That's something that they just chose to do. So, I guess the, the summary of that is that it's an open meeting, anybody can attend, you can't exclude anybody from attending. So, the process, if you so choose, the process by which to, uh, keep the questions confidential from the candidates, as you're interviewing the candidates, is to request the candidates to leave the room and then bring, and if they so agree to leave the room, you then bring them in one by one for the, uh, individual interviews.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Trustee mayor.
You know, I, I would like, uh, to propose that the, uh, candidates get the questions, uh, before the meeting, and that each trustee gets one question to submit to the, um, candidates, and then we'll go around and each one of us ask the question that we submitted to the, uh, to the candidates. And I think a three-minute, um, uh, going over and telling them all about themselves is really good, too. And then, they go around and each one of us ask the question that we submitted.
Other thoughts, trustee McCleary?
Yeah, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, um, hearing, uh, an, an answer that comes from their heart, and an answer that gives us an idea as to how much knowledge they may have regarding the questions that we're asking, um, I don't think they need to preview those questions. What I believe we, we've done in the past is that we have the questions set up, and I don't care how you want to develop those questions. And then there's a copy of the questions right in front of the candidate, because my experience has been that they, people get nervous when they have to answer any question. Even when they think they, when they have the background, there's a difference for me, and I'm looking for someone who obviously has the passion and the understanding of what we're confronting with our students, and someone who has no agenda other than our students. I would like to see the real person. I mean, there's always a, there's a conversation in being an administrator when you're looking at teachers, whether you just go in and see what they're doing, or whether you go in and see the dog and pony show. And so, therein lies the difference in what John has proposed, I think, and what I am proposing, so it's, and I don't have, I'm not going to have strong argument about it, but that's my perspective. I want to see what they can do, sitting here answering a question.
Trustee Ruggerio, and then trustee mayor.
Actually, I think, I, I think I like what Vice President McCleary is proposing, that I like the idea of putting the questions right in front of them so they can see them. I think that's a fair process, and I think, um, they've had the opportunity to answer those first five initial questions, and so, um, part of this job is being able to, uh, make those decisions on your feet and answer questions like that. Um, we all certainly went through that when we ran for office, so I'm thinking, actually, that's kind of a similar process. So, um, I, I am supportive of that process.
Trustee mayor.
You know, since, I, I, and I forgot that we have, uh, their answers to five questions in here, that we can see how they write and how they organize and things like that, so we really will have both of the types of questions, the ones that they prepared with their application and, uh, spur of the moment, you know. and spur of the moment, so I'd be willing to do that.
Trustee Gutierrez.
I think five questions is maybe a little bit too much, maybe four solid questions, or something a little bit, you know, tangible. I don't know, six is too many, and maybe five is a little bit too many, I think four is about right, or three or four, for an interview type of, because we have five candidates. And then just, I read this as a debacle, just so that you guys know, in one of the magazines that this process was used in another board, and so texting took place in that part of that process, so we have to make sure if we're going to do this process, we don't have phones, probably texting.
You mean the audience, or the board members texting?
Audience and the candidates.
In the other room.
Well, no, and I just read this, I'm sorry, because I'm part of cube, and so there was part of that. But, I mean, you have to think about it, because that was part of the.
I never even gave that a thought.
Yeah, we can't exclude them, it's a public meeting.
Trustee Rosenberg.
All I was going to say is, I think it's better to come prepared with more questions than with fewer questions. Some will be able to answer them relatively quickly, others won't.
Yeah, I like the idea of not having the, I think we should not share the questions, because I think, as you say, it provides both the written that they've already done and spontaneous. What I'd like to suggest is that each trustee submit a question to Mr. Drake, and then Mr. Drake and I will sit down and just determine that they're not all the same question, and that there's distinct questions. And remember that you can always do follow-up questions, so even if, you know, something occurs while the question's being answered, each trustee has the option to ask a follow-up question. It's similar to what we did for the superintendent, the superintendent had the questions in front of them.
Right.
If you remember, and we decided what the questions were, and they didn't know about them, and then we were able to ask follow-up questions based on something that might have occurred in their answer. And they were as well able to give a, a pre, I think they also were able to give one final comment at the end, and I don't know if we want to do that or not, but I think we did that as well. Trustee McQuarrie, and then trustee Ruggerio.
They generally do, to get the ice broken, so to speak, they do an introduction of themselves, and I think we probably need to be looking at about a half an hour, but Howard's right about.
Very thoughtful.
You know, Howard is right about the fact that some people will get so nervous, and then they can't remember anything, and then, so we need to have a couple of opportunities for them to feel comfortable, and that's one of the biggest issues for most people in doing an interview. I used to get what I called, I now know what it means to spit cotton.
Yes.
My mouth would get so dry that I couldn't even move my mouth.
And that reminds me, let's have water at the table.
Yes.
So, just to repeat what we, what I've heard so far is that each trustee will submit a question to our legal counsel. You'll review to ensure that they're not duplicate questions, and refine to make sure they make, you know, proper sense, and things like that. That the individual will have an opportunity to do, give a brief introduction and a brief closing. Anticipated the interview could last approximately 30 minutes. And then there was mention of asking them to volunteer, like Clark County does, to leave the room and join each other in a conference room, and that in good faith, they won't be texting or exchanging answers, because I don't think we can technically ask them not to participate because of open meeting, but in good faith, we would ask them to maybe put them in a room together.
Correct.
With some coffee or tea, and in good faith to keep their phones turned off and put away until after.
Yes.
The process. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing, trustee Gutierrez.
So, how many questions are we saying?
I think we're saying at this point, one from each trustee.
So, six questions.
And they could, they, they might be a very simple, we don't know till we get the questions.
Yes.
I think we frame it at the beginning, we have about a half an hour, so you need to be judicious in how you answer your questions. As well, the trustees need to be aware in the number of follow-up questions. I don't think that we should schedule the next one, give 15 minutes in between as a, you know, and then we can break, or whatever, in between, and do 45 minutes times the five people. Trustee Ruggerio.
Thank you to JJ, she commented that Logan should have an opportunity to ask a question, and I agree, wholeheartedly. Sorry about that, Logan.
How many do we have to pay for, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
I think that's right.
Seven questions.
It's important.
His would be the hardest.
Yes, I feel sorry for the candidates for the answer.
What do you have to offer me?
Yeah. And that's considering that Logan can take the 18th off again from noon on. Trustee Gutierrez.
How do we approve the questions?
I don't think we approve them, I think we're just checking to see that they're not duplicates.
I'm just asking.
Yeah. I think the trustees have the intelligence to come up with a question that they feel is, they want to hear from the candidates, and I think it's just a matter of making sure they're not redundant. And if they are redundant, we could call, if there's two that have the same question, we can call them and indicate that you're both saying the same thing, and would somebody like to do a different question?
Would you like me to summarize now?
Any other comments?
To summarize what you said.
Okay.
Okay. Here's the summary I have so far, and if it's accurate, and somebody wants to make a motion based on this summary, that would be great. Each trustee and Mr. Carlson is going to submit a question to my office in advance of Tuesday.
Let's say by Monday at 5:00.
Monday at 5:00.
Let's say.
Monday at noon?
Let's say Monday morning, I mean, over the weekend, can you guys come up with a question, everybody?
I could do it by tomorrow.
By tomorrow?
Oh, I need more of the time than that.
Okay, Monday morning by 10:00 a.m.
Okay, so each trustee and Mr. Carlson will submit a question to my office by Monday morning at 10:00 a.m. I will then review those questions with President Clark to, for the purpose of redundancy and clarity. If there is any redundancy issues or clarity issues, I will contact you to rectify that or submit a different question. The questions will then be prepared in written format, so they can, so they will be in front of the candidate during their interview, for reference. The conference room will be prepared for, and then at the commencement of the meeting on November 18th, the candidates will be requested to voluntarily gather in the conference room, and also requested not to participate in the meeting otherwise by way of their cellphone, cellphone or other electronic device, that is purely voluntary, voluntary because of open meeting. Each candidate will be allowed a brief introduction and closing, before, the introduction before the questions, and a closing after the questions, with the anticipation that each interview will last approximately 30 minutes. The trustees will break for 10 to 15 minutes after each interview in preparation for the next interview.
Should we call alphabetically, or shall we pick names arbitrarily? So I don't want, you know, because there's advantages to, or disadvantages to where you are in the pecking order, so do we want to do alphabetically, or should we just put the names in something and we'll pull it out? Trustee Ruggerio.
I think that's very fair to, I don't know what you call it, pull it out, pull them out of the hat.
Random order, random order.
So have the names in something, and we'll just pull it out.
Candidates will be selected by random order. Does that cover everything in everyone's mind so far?
Trustee mayor.
I have a question, they get sworn in right after the vote, right?
No, not until the next, well, I don't.
They can be.
They can be.
But usually it's done by way of a formal process at the next scheduled meeting.
And usually, they would like to have their family come, I mean, most of us invite somebody that they want to be when they're sworn in, and so I think it would be a little bit better if we did it on the 9th, is it December 9th?
Yes.
Yeah. Trustee Ruggerio, then trustee, go ahead, trustee mayor.
So, we're having the big Powell and Henderson, the state association, have we made arrangements that the person that gets this position will be able to attend that conference?
Yes, yes.
Have we?
Yes.
Can we announce it, just so that the candidates?
Yes, so then there's the NSBA, state, National School Boards Association, state school boards conference in Henderson, Nevada, on Friday, November 21st, and Saturday, November 22nd, at the Green Valley Ranch Resort and Casino in Henderson, Nevada. There is a, reservations already secured for the incoming trustee.
Trustee Ruggerio.
So, once we go through the interviews, is there, do we need to decide on how that next, how the decision will be made, will we just have a conversation, will we take a vote, what is the idea?
I think we ought to have a ranking sheet again, for those five candidates. There should be discussion, but then I think, well, I don't know, maybe we need to raise our hand and do a trustee Gutierrez.
I thought we, at that point, you vote for the person.
Yeah.
You vote for the person, and I didn't know it was open, but now I know it's open, but we do it either open, right?
The.
By hand, or and by name?
I think it should be done. As you elect officers.
Yeah.
Someone makes a motion, is there a second, are there four votes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can have discussion.
And there's discussion by way, even before that, and discussion by way of the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve that process going forward?
And so we want to make sure we're clear on the date that the, that person would be sworn in, so they're.
December 9th.
Sworn in on December 9th at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
But they would go ahead and attend the school, the state school board association conference if they so.
Calendar allows it, absolutely.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the current process that we just outlined.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so questions in by 10:00 Monday morning. Do we have any further business under this item?
We've selected the finalists, and we've discussed and approved the process.
We still have public comment, Mr. Rosenberg?
That, yeah, so that concludes, that concludes item 2.01, 2.01, we don't need further business on that.
Great, now we're on our final public comment, is there anybody that would like to, I don't have any cards in front of me. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, our next meeting obviously is next Tuesday, November 18th at 12:00. I did want to thank the trustees for the flowers, I appreciate it, you know, passing them, moms are already hard, always hard, so I appreciate your thoughts very much, and consideration while I was gone, so thank you very much.